Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashir-Tosh.
Good rainy evening. It's great to see everyone tonight, and it is my pleasure to call to order the December 21st, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Chair Bashir Tosh.
Here.
Vice Chair Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Cor.
Here.
Commissioner Coman. Commissioner Neal. Agenda Item 2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the requests. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve them or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for consent public hearing items 5A through 5C, or non-consent public hearing items 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time. Seeing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Item.
All matters listed under the consent items do not... Did we miss something? Oh. I'm going to keep reading, sorry. "All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing, and it will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action." May I get a motion approving consent items 4A, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Coman and Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will now open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? What was your name, sir?
Pardon me?
What was your name, I'm sorry?
My name is Gordon Nip. I'm the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. I sent in a letter on this earlier today. I don't know that it's been distributed. I do have some copies that I can hand out.
Thank you.
You can hand out the copies, and then we'll call your item. Yes.
Thank you. Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove any other item from the public hearing? At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation? And I believe that would just be for 5C at this point.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Coman and Commissioner Neal absent, and also with item 5A and 5B being removed from consent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give us a report on the item. Then, those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given a five-minute rebuttal period for additional comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will be not answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you. We will be taking item 6A first, and that will be followed by 5A and 5B, which were removed. I would like to ask Tanaya Wright to come forward. She'll be presenting this case to your commission.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tanaya Wright, Assistant Planner with the Development Services Department. Today, I'm presenting Agenda Item 6A, Conditional Use Permit, Number 23-0288. The proposed project site is located east of Old Farm Road and north of Olive Drive, more specifically, within the campus of Olive Branch Community Church. The applicant, Porter &amp; Associates, Inc., representing Olive Branch Community Church, is seeking approval to allow for a specialized school as part of the existing church in the R1CH zone. The project site is 6.81 acres, and the predominant zoning near the subject site is designated as R1. The stated proposal will consist of two multi-use modular buildings, an outdoor learning space with garden, a playground, and the existing church. The school will be serviced by Kern Resource Center to provide services for families of Kern County. Kern Resource Center will assist in coaching, educating, preparing, and helping to build life skills. In addition, Kern Resource Center will offer classes of core branch of study, including physical education, nutrition, gardening, ballroom dancing, and music and arts. This conditional use permit will encompass the entire operation of the school, including the new facilities and projected maximum capacity operation. There are 75 students currently enrolled, with plans to expand to 150 students this year, and a maximum capacity of 250 students in the future. There are approximately 60 to 75 students on campus at any given time. Some students are homeschooled two days per week, and others are there only on Fridays. Currently, there are nine part-time staff members, one part-time administrative staff, and the pastor of the existing church. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit. No additional... No public opposition has been received, and that concludes my presentation on this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Robinson. I am a coach at Kern Resource Center. I teach English and history, grades 5 through 12. I remind my students on a regular basis, a quote from Jordan Peterson, "The lack of your best hurts everything." What we as teachers at Kern Resource... What we as coaches at Kern Resource Center have done is we're following the example of our director, Melissa Wheeler, who has, in my estimation, given her absolute best with regards to putting this particular project together. And I am very, very happy to hear that there is no objection to this at all, and we're very, very much looking forward to getting started with this project. And I'd like to thank you all for your consideration with regards to Kern Resource Center, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Cory Hanners, and I have a son that attends Kern Resource Center as a kindergartner. I just colored my hair gray, so that's why I look older, to have a kindergartner. Anyways, I just wanted to come and support. My son's been in school since... In this program since the beginning, and I have noticed a huge change. He's really starting to read, and the kids that I see on campus are so kind. And I also was looking at the pictures, and I just... I love how the setup is, and I think it's good for neighbors to have that growth in the community. I really just wanted to say, it's just been the biggest blessing, this campus, and just to see the kids with manners is the biggest excitement that I get, where I see kids open doors for people and pull out chairs for people, and it just gives me hope for the future. So please, please approve this plan and give our children a better future. Thank you so much for your time, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project?
Freddie Porter, Porter &amp; Associates Engineering, acting as applicant on behalf of Kern Resource Center and the church, Olive Branch Community Church. And this is a great, great site. It's an existing church facility, parking lot, everything's there. Quite a bit of vacant land that's been underutilized, and I think this is a great project to kind of infill some of that space and use the existing roads and everything that's already in place to serve this project. So I'm here if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Shane Cowan. I have three children that attend Kern Resource Center. We... I'll keep it short. The Resource Center's been a blessing to us. We've had children in San Diego Unified School District and elsewhere, and we're just really impressed with what we've seen so far, and we're really thankful to have them, and I ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, at this time, is there anyone... Oh, go ahead.
Allowed me to get home kind of early. I've got a lot of work to do before the holidays. Rudy Gonzalez, Department of Defense, World Boxing Association, World Health Associated, World Trade Associated, Gosh, let me see, Homage Collaborative, Socioeconomic, 80% Intervention. I want to mention, this is a great idea. Two things I wanted to point out. One, the Wilson Tower, as long as we're on the subject right now, if you go there, it has the highest denotation of elevation within the city. It's federally communicated commission, but right now, currently at 92. Clifford's watching it right now, and he's a wonderful guy, great pool player. We just... It'd be... I think it'd be the utmost importance of safety. It's well-needed. Good Lord, thank God they're doing this. So if we can kind of... If we can denotate that element and maybe upgrade with a better sophisticated system of operation in terms of watching our federal communications and such, I think it'll be a splendid idea. Also, too... Well, yeah, that's about it. This is my biggest concern. I know, and I'm trying to work on those facial things. I'm working off Human Technological Services 100%, so I've been doing it for about 10 years. Is there anything else needed? Oh, by the way, I just wanted to add for the record, we do have Chapter 3 of the... For Navigation Services Purposes Address, so left that with law enforcement today. Haven't been within the city. Bunch of other stuff in that subterranean also, so the water company has that right. But thank you very much, and I stay at Army... Oh, excuse me, Department of Defense, God forgive me, I live with Marines.
Rudy, what was your last name?
Gonzalez, sir.
Thank you, Rudy.
Sir, yes, sir.
Have a good night. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion on the matter, it's only a time to ask questions. Seeing none. Do we need to move into rebuttal period now? I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action.
On behalf of making a motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kater.
To adopt staff's recommendation.
May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Coman and Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. For this next portion, will we be breaking them into two or still together because they're... Together? Okay. Okay, now is the time for non-consent public hearing item 6A? Oh, sorry, 5A and 5B. I've got a lot of papers up here, I apologize. Do I need to read the disclaimer again? No?
You can just go straight to the...
Yeah. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes. We're going to go ahead and present these as one presentation because they are budding maps. I would note that your commission did receive a memorandum transmitting changes to conditions related to the parks that came, and then we received a late comment letter from Sierra Club. That did not make it into a memo. We have reviewed it, we are available to respond to that, and I believe Mr. Nip did hand out copies for your commission's consideration. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Principal Planner Jenny Ing to present this project. Projects.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am here to present vesting tentative track map 7408 and 7415. This project is located generally on the northeast corner of Pensinger Road and South Allen Road in southwest Bakersfield. It should be familiar to this commission because about two months ago, you considered and recommended approval of the related general plan amendment, zone change, and planned unit development project to facilitate a small lot, single-family subdivision project for this 80 acres. And on November 29th this year, City Council unanimously approved those land use entitlement changes. These two maps facilitate that development. In total, it's 497 lots for single-family dwellings on 80.45 acres. The net density has been increased to 10.18 dwelling units per net acre, which is consistent with a high-medium residential density designation that was approved by the council. Vesting tentative track 7408 consists of 248 single-family lots and a 2.11-acre park lot, a sump lot, and various landscaping lots on 40.56 acres. Vesting tentative track 7415 consists of 249 single-family residential lots and has a 2.66-acre park lot and a 2.5-acre drill site on 39.59 acres. In combination, the project will be developed and look as one single consistent product, which is designed to... In a cluster of design where they share each... Each lot will share a single driveway in clusters of four to six lots each. The lot sizes... The majority of lot sizes are around 3,400 square feet to about 4,300 square feet. Paseos and common pedestrian walkways will connect the residents to the centrally located 4.77-acre park. This park will be constructed and designed by the developer under the direction of the Recreation and Parks Department, and agreements will be entered into related to that aspect of it, and ultimately, the city will maintain that park. HOA will maintain all private and common areas within that development, like the paseos. As Director Johnson mentioned, there is a memo from Recreation Parks admitting their conditions, and staff is recommending that be incorporated into the motion, and then the late correspondence we did receive. So these two tracks, in combination, represent the... And facilitate the development that was approved about two months ago with the land use entitlements to increase the density and provide a small lot, single-family subdivision product. Staff is recommending and recommending approval incorporating the memo. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Blaine Neptune. I'm with Macintosh &amp; Associates, and we're the applicant and engineer for this project. Really excited about it. It's the first... One of the first small lot projects in Bakersfield, and it's been a long time coming. We've spent a lot of time with city staff coming to this, spent a lot of time with members of the council talking about this project, and excited to bring it to fruition. Increasing material costs and construction costs have kind of affected home prices recently, and this is one of the things that we can do to help bring more affordable housing to Bakersfield, and it's much needed. So I'm here to answer any questions... Oh, and going through the process and going through the improvement plan process, we will be preparing improvement plans, and part of these improvement plans and grading plans require hiring a qualified biologist to do a biological clearance survey. That is required to get a grading permit. It is also required 30 days prior to commencing grading. So there will be one or two or three biological clearance surveys done in the process of getting these plans approved. So anyway, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and looking forward to bringing this project to Bakersfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Gordon Nip. I'm the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. Since the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan is no longer in effect, the Sierra Club is concerned that development is getting by with no mitigation whatsoever for species impacts and habitat loss. These projects are a prime example. And by the way, I'm speaking to both projects here, both tracks 7408 and 7415. A mitigation measure that's meant to address species and habitat loss for these two tracks is the hopelessly ineffective Condition of Approval Number 32. There are three sentences in here. I'd like to touch... I'd like to touch on each of these three sentences in this Condition of Approval Number 32 separately. The first sentence, in Condition of Approval Number 32, and let me just quote here. Prior to ground disturbance, the project proponent shall comply with federal and state laws protecting species of plants, fish, and wildlife that are listed or proposed for listing as endangered or threatened, as well as their designated critical habitat. The city is demanding that the developers obey the law, something they would have to do regardless of the condition. There's no monitoring mechanism, there's no reporting mechanism, there's no enforcing mechanism. Protecting species and habitat here is left up to the good faith of the developers, whose primary and perhaps conflicting motives may very well be maximizing profit rather than protecting species. Let's go to sentence number two, and I quote here again. Quote, "If the presence of an endangered or threatened species on private land that overlaps with development that impose certain duties, such as avoiding unauthorized take and requiring consultation with United States Fish and Wildlife Service and/or California Department of Fish and Wildlife Agency," unquote. This isn't a complete sentence, and it's unintelligible, so we'll just leave it at that. The third sentence, and again, I quote. "If unauthorized take occurs, property owners and developers shall take the necessary steps to ensure compliance with federal and state laws." Unauthorized take occurring? This sentence seems to normalize illegal behavior, taking endangered species, killing endangered and threatened species. Without monitoring and enforcement, the presumed duty to take the necessary steps to ensure compliance after breaking the law is left to the conscience of the developers, whose primary and conflicting motives may very well be avoiding legal consequences and, of course, maximizing profit. How likely is it that that, or anything else in this condition, is going to occur? This developer-friendly, non-conditioned, in the absence of the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan, sets a precedent that would contribute to the extinction of species like the San Joaquin kit fox. To approve this project now with no meaningful kit fox mitigation before decisive current input from wildlife resource agencies is received, neither you, the decision-makers, nor the public, have any idea whether there are significant species and habitat issues, nor do we know what mitigation should be required. You should not make an uninformed decision on this important issue without knowing what the impacts are, or without knowing what mitigation for species issues will be required. To address biological resource issues, a biological survey and consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife could be required before project approval. Mitigation for habitat loss and potential species take should probably include an incidental take permit acquired from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and purchase a replacement habitat, as the expired habitat conservation plan would require. If you're at all interested in doing the right thing, if you care at all about the kit fox and other species, you should be looking out for them, placing requirements that would be effective. Don't approve these projects with this hopelessly ineffective condition before there's definitive consultation and input from state and federal wildlife agencies. I should mention as well that there's no requirement at all for mitigation for the climate crisis, there's no mitigation requirement for farmland loss, and there's no mitigation for the cumulative impact of these projects on our city's abysmal air quality, arguably the worst air quality of any city in the nation. At the very least, these projects should be mitigating air pollution to zero via a voluntary emission reduction. voluntary emission reduction agreement with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nip. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion, but only to ask questions. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, the request to speak button is gone. Ladies first.
I have a question for the staff. Mr., from McIntosh?
Neptune.
Neptune. He mentioned that biological survey will be required before the issuance of grading permit. Is it before the grading permit or is it before the grading start?
To comply with Endangered Species Act, they will need to have a biologist inspect the site 30 days prior to ground disturbance.
Okay.
Questions for staff? Mr. Nip referenced the Habitat Conservation Mitigation Plan and that we were no longer in compliance. Can you explain briefly how maybe we're looking at this differently than we would have a year ago?
So it was almost exactly a year ago now that our incidental take permit or MBHCP actually expired. And we are with city council right now, working with city council on whether we go about renewing that. But it is expired right now. And so there is no incidental take permit under the MBHCP. So the requirement now is that all developers, if they're going to disturb land, that they comply with the federal and the state Endangered Species Act. So this, what you see here, was actually ran through CDFW as a cursory review because we didn't want to just not include anything. So we wanted to make sure we included something to, if anything, alert the developers that they still must comply with state and federal law.
And so then, based off of staff's understanding of state and federal law, the biological survey 30 days before site disturbance, does that fit within the construct of a compliance with state and federal law?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to provide rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will be given five minutes, so make sure your comments, or make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. Five minutes in favor. Seeing none, would you like five minutes as a rebuttal? In opposition? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing on the item and return to commission for comment and action.
In fact, I'm just going to add to my comments real quick, is that during that biological inspection, it may be identified that they may need to get their own separate incidental take permit. Just, I mean, it's not like you just do a survey and then you can disturb ground. There's still requirements that you need to comply with if there's species on site that are identified. So it's not just a free-for-all, no.
I just do want to thank these gentlemen for coming out. It is important that we take care of what we've been given here in Kern County, and we're very lucky to have the beautiful resources that we have. But I'm also very confident in the city in providing EIR reports and making sure that our developers are keeping Kern County the beautiful place that we love in Bakersfield, too. This is exactly the type of housing that I would like to see, that more missing middle ground housing that we are lacking so that we can have more affordable housing options here in Bakersfield for our younger families and people just starting out. So unless my other commissioners have any other comments, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I agree with Commissioner Biddle, and then, yes, I would like to second that motion.
Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Coman and Commissioner Neal absent.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. Would you like to read the appeal?
Yes, thank you. Decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. The appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project, identify the decision appealed, and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items at this time?
I do, thank you. And before I wish everyone happy holidays, we will not be having a meeting on January 4th, and we will announce our next meeting after that, whether it's the 18th or into February. I would note that Councilmember Smith did select a replacement for Commissioner Lomas, and that is Nicholas Strickland. We are meeting with him next, I'm going to say we, the city attorney's office and myself are meeting with him next week. We'll get him on boarded and get him ready for the next meeting. And lastly, I did invite Cassandra Gale to sit at the dais. She doesn't get at the dais and get the head seat very often. But I did want to recognize that, and you saw my email, next week is her last week with the city. She's done so much for planning and for the city. It's really amazing, and we were privileged to have her with us for really the short amount of time that you were here. But we do wish her great luck.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Cassandra, or Ms. Gale, I'm so glad that you joined us tonight. I just wanted to impart just how grateful we are as a commission to the work you've done. I think Mr. Johnson referred to it as a short time you're with us, but when you go through the list of initiatives and programs and things you've really impacted, I think you've made an enormous impact on our city that will be felt for decades. And so I don't feel like it's appropriate to measure your impact to the city and duration in the position. I think, you know, that's the great thing about planning, right? Is you're setting up the roadmap for a better community and a better city. And the opportunity that we as commissioners have had to interact with you on projects of controversy, but also attending the League of Cities Planning Commissioner Conference, I don't know if that's the right name for it, but it's been a joy to get to work with you. I have no doubt that wherever you're going next, you will be an asset and you will be missed. So thank you for your contribution.
In response to that, I didn't, the reason I said short time is because I didn't want to say it's felt like a long time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it hasn't, it's...
We get it. It's been a long time and a short time.
For the record, I have been with the city for over five years.
Yeah, that's true. Which in like, new employment turns is like 55 years, so, yes.
Same. I just want to say thank you for the time that you've spent with us. It was really nice to get to know you on the conference, and it's going to be really sad to see you go, but I'm okay with it as long as you're staying local.
I am staying local. I appreciate your guys' comments. Thank you so much.
It's so bittersweet because I feel bad for Paul and his team losing someone, but I'm also excited for you, a new opportunity, new venture, and you're an incredible person. I'm sure it's going to be just a great experience, and thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations and congratulations on your future endeavor. I only known you for a short period of time, but I'm sure wherever you go next, you're going to do great things like you've been doing here. But congratulations.
No questions on her doctoral degree?
Oh, congratulations.
Wait, are you, is it completed?
I am working on a doctorate from University of Southern California. I'm in the last leg of the program right now, writing my dissertation on barriers that city employees face when trying to implement equitable community engagement practices. So that's, I'm not going far. This will be the last you see of me. I'm hoping to be able to create a change model roadmap for cities like ours to do better and to serve the public the best we can. So, thank you again.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:10 PM on December 21st, 2023. Thank you.